Welcome everybody to today's Strategy and Policy Committee meeting. Please let myself or Democracy Advisor know if you intend to leave the meeting. Morning tea will be at 10:30 and we'll move straight on to apologies. We have four, we've got apologies from Deputy Mayor Free and councillor Conde, they're away on council business. And we have early departure apologies for Mayor Foster and councillor Young. Are there any other apologies that I've missed? Okay, so do I have a second for those? Thank you councillor Matthews, and so we'll now put that motion to the vote accordingly. Next carried, a call on members to declare any conflicts of interest that they may have in relation to the items on the agenda. Confirmation of minutes, I move the motion that Strategy and Policy Committee approves the minutes of the Strategy and Policy Committee meeting held on the 11th of March 2021. Having been circulated, they'd be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of. Thank you councillor O'Neill, I now put the motion which has been moved and seconded, please vote accordingly. Carried, there are no items that are not on the agenda, we'll move straight into public participation. And I'd like to start by welcoming National Council of Women, so we've got Rabia, Uma and Sonia. Noh mai ha'urangi, welcome, thank you. Now, just as a wee bit of an explanation, they're coming to do a submission on the draft spatial plan. And this is because somehow the request to come and do the submissions during the process fell out of the system. So we're making sure that we're rounding back round and that we get to hear from you because we know that you've talked to quite a few people about this and it's important that we hear that. So thank you for taking the time and persevering, so you've got 10 minutes.
Thank you. Kia ora and assalamualaikum, so as you're familiar faces, so my name is Rabia Naitula. And I've got, I'm the branch secretary for the Wellington, secretary for the Wellington branch for the National Council of Women. And I've got Sonia Randawa, who is our branch president, and I've also got the lovely Uma. And she is a branch member, but she assisted us in this, the written submission. So we're very fortunate to have her here with us today. So today we'll be doing our oral submission for the draft spatial plan. And this is based on the feedback from our public consultation session for the What Wellington Women Want that we had last year in September. And so our submission that we've prepared is based on the session that we had with the 90 women in attendance. And we also had councillor Aiona Panet with us as well, is she here? She's not, oh, she's there, oh, hello. And so the submission is not a reflection or aligned with the NCW NZ policy, but the views expressed here are based on the feedback and from the Zoom session that we had. So I'll jump right into it, so we're starting off with the intensification of the central city. So all participants either agreed or strongly agreed, especially when comparing the Wellington, especially when comparing Wellington with other capital and larger cities around the world which are designed in a similar way. Participants found that the proposed plans were a good utilisation of available space to accommodate people if we want to be greener and keep people in Wellington. Youth are in favour of what is proposed in terms of housing densification. And participants provided further feedback which have been summarised to two key points. So although new apartment developments mean higher buildings and apartments in the central city, this will accommodate for more young professionals and students keeping them in Wellington. But how can we better serve families and turn apartments into cities, and the cities into family homes? And the next was about public accessibility, which is very important to maintain and preserve the openness and accessibility to the waterfront as it's a highlight of our city. So how do we ensure a really good public transport model with apartments potentially taking away key parking spaces for people that need them? With more intensification, is there potential for Wellington as a compact city to become a car-free central city? Now moving on to the intensification of inner suburbs, participants at the session agreed tentatively, but not to all the suggestions proposed with intensification in the inner suburbs and the draft spatial plan. Participants provided feedback which have been summarised to two key points. The first being majority of participants agreed that intensification is a good idea, but better consultation with private sector developers around building apartments should be considered. They also, participants also noticed that intensification was heavily focused in the Ardu Valley, which is a high-density area, so why not focus on other areas? The second point being that many liked that green areas are protected and not messing with the public transport. But some believe that there is a need to include more things like waste management and circular economy principles, for example, government regulations around non-recyclable plastics. Moving on to intensification of the outer suburbs, most participants agree with the proposal to intensify the outer suburbs and a few were neutral. Participants noticed that there were a lot of, there is already a lot of infill housing under construction, including terrace-type housing in Johnsonville. Participants particularly liked that there was more intensification closer to the existing suburban centres, as this brought people closer to amenities, including local businesses and public transport links. Participants felt that this would encourage more people to use public transport rather than their cars and public, and parking spaces, which is better for the environment and those who need private vehicles more, for example, to save people and families. Participants provided feedback under the following themes, new apartment developments, community engagement, health and safety, public transport and earthquake risk. Due to the time limit for presenting this, we won't go into depth regarding the particular feedback, but this information is an alberin submission. And so participants chose the following top five amenities to help create a vibrant suburban centre. Access to public transport being number one, and number two, community spaces or hubs that provide for a variety of functions, for example, working, studying, et cetera. Growing in importance with more people working from home due to COVID-19. The third being infrastructure, so if more people live in apartments, this needs to be prioritised to avoid issues like the Wellington water crisis in February 2020. Fourth being proximity to parks and open spaces as COVID-19 has demonstrated the importance of this, especially for physical exercise and wellbeing. And finally, social and community facilities to promote socialisation of neighbourhoods. The top five amenities participants wanted to see around future mass rapid transit stops. So bicycle park, bicycle parking, community facilities, landscape spaces or plantings, medical facilities or centres and public shared spaces. Moving on to character areas, so many participants largely agree with this balance, but participants were more in favour of denser housing considering the city's population and projected growth over the next 30 years. Also, there was feedback that we shouldn't try maintaining old houses for the sake of it, especially when the same protections have not been offered when it comes to Taonga for Tanga Tafinoa. The second point that we have here is many believe that rental costs are too high, especially for poor quality, badly maintained and unhealthy homes. And we don't have strong protections for renters to justify this. And New Zealand is one of the most, New Zealand is one of the few developed countries in the world where people suffer from rheumatic fever, a disease linked to substandard homes. So this impact should outweigh protecting special character. Moving on to our city tomorrow, there was a mix of opinions with some participants who agree and other participants who disagree. It was felt that COVID-19 had changed our norms, for example, more people who live in the inner suburbs, more people who live in the inner and outer suburbs were working from home instead of commuting into the central city for work, including at alert level one and two. It was felt that the way to achieve these goals did not take into account the new normal post-COVID-19. Participants found the following things to be most beneficial during the different levels in their local suburb. Community welfare, a prime example of this was the Wellington Student Volunteer Army. Outdoor spaces, there was more appreciation for this, less homeless population, which raised the question of if they can be housed during COVID-19, then why can't they be housed on a permanent basis? And then the last being nearby amenities such as walking to the grocery store or utilising cycleways. Now I've got two topics that were kind of key that arose from the, they were more reiterating the same points that came from the submission. So on the topic of COVID-19, it was felt that this particular lens was missing from the draft spatial plan and that the impact of changing norms had not been included. So participants raised a question of whether we could still expect substantial growth in the next 30 years if people choose to work from home permanently. If people had the option of living anywhere for work, would they not opt for areas with cheap cost of living, i.e. rural communities? And many participants agreed that the draft spatial plan needs to be redrawn to consider the impact of COVID-19 in order to be fit for purpose. And then the last being Wellington City Council engagement, participants were particularly concerned that there was not enough engagement on the draft spatial plan of swapping of ideas. While there was acknowledgement, while there was an acknowledgement from Wellington City councillors, we're doing more outreach on social media and with pop-up sessions. Many participants still felt it was only the same people who were engaging with the Wellington City Council. It was felt that there was not enough input from different perspectives and those most affected by the proposed changes. It is also difficult to come to oral submissions as many people at work. One participant suggested that Wellington City Council needs to start collecting data to see who is making submissions and how often, how often that is and is it actually representative? We found that our most vulnerable and marginalised communities always face the brunt of changes to policies and legislation. So we need to make sure that the consultations are reaching those groups and therefore making submissions. So that is our submission and thank you so much for listening to me.
Kia ora, we've got Wan Patai from Mayor Foster.
Yeah, thank you, look, thank you very much, and that's really extensive, there's a huge amount to unpack in that. But just two quick ones I wanted to ask you. First one is in 4.2, you mentioned some feedback from people about earthquake or seismic resilience. I just wondered if you could just unpick that a little bit more and how big a issue that was for how many of the people who you were engaging with. And the second one was the one which is sort of inviting us to think about what a post-COVID world looks like if people are doing more working from home. And the reality is I don't think we know, but I'd be interested in how you might envisage that, because there's obviously a lot of different scenarios there.
Yep. So just on the earthquake question, we had a lot of concerns about if we're intensifying the city and this is, you know, Wellington and New Zealand sits on the ring of fire. Is that not going to cause more damage if there's potentially an earthquake and we've got more people living in the city? Won't that cause more stress on things like fire and rescue, should there be a big disaster? So that was something that didn't come through in the draft spatial plan, like what was the plans for the civil defence and fire and police and all those things that would be really important in terms of a disaster? And that concern did come mainly from our older population, the older participants that came along, because obviously I think they've seen more of the impact of that over the years. But I think after Kekora, that is a very valid thing. If we were, if Kekora had happened during a busy time and we've got a lot more people in the city, how would we have handled that? And then just in regards to the second question with COVID-19, some of the changing norms that we've seen is a lot more people are working from home, including during alert level one and two. We have a lot of offices, a lot, like I think quite a few of us within the branch have noticed that our workplaces have downsized their office space in the city. Just for my workplace, for instance, we've lost two floors. So we're getting all of these empty office space and we have a housing crisis in Wellington. And we're also seeing the suburbs becoming more important, we're seeing, you know, a lot of people going back to these suburbs. And if in the draft spatial plan we're talking about intensification, we can create communities there. And with the office space that's sort of empty here, we could turn that into housing. And, you know, those businesses that are sort of suffering in Wellington, if they've got now catering towards people that live there instead of office people, they don't necessarily, they won't necessarily go under, they'll just have to cater to different people. So that was some of the things we were thinking about. And I think the other thing, another good point was like the green space. I don't think people had a true appreciation for them until they were forced into lockdown. And if you're living in a tiny, we have a lot of students in our branch, if you're living in a tiny cramped space, the only thing you can really do to go and escape is those green spaces and they are disappearing. So there was a more, bigger appreciation for that following COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kia ora, tēnā koutou, thank you so much for coming in to kōrero with us and for persevering, as I said, to make sure that we heard your submission because it was important when you've engaged with quite a few people that we do get to hear that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you after your next engagement, thank you. So now I'd like to welcome Professor Michael Kelly, who's speaking on item 2.3, noh mai ha'urangi. So Professor Kelly, you have five minutes and there may be some questions, but five minutes does go quite fast. Okay, thank you.
No, I don't have a clicker. In the way we're going at the moment, that 79% of all the energy used in the world in 2050 will also be by fossil fuels. The world energy consumption at the moment is dominated by the growth of the global middle class, and I'll have two slides to show that. If we have an all-electric home in Wellington, we're going to have to rewire the entire city. At the moment, we have a 60 amp fuse based on the fact that 60 years ago, when that standard was set, an eight-amp fuse, an eight-amp electric kettle was the biggest demand. But I'll show you what the demand of some of the new appliances are and we'll need at least 120, if not 150 amp fuse. Batteries at the metropolitan scale are going to be nowhere for the next 100 years. The Elon Musk battery installed outside Adelaide for 90 million Australian dollars would power Wellington Hospital for about one day. And only the emergency wards of Wellington Hospital. And although one would say, well, let them burn a bit of fossil fuel if it's an emergency, we can't use that same excuse if we think we're going to power Wellington City central by batteries when the wind isn't blowing. The capacity for wasted investments is enormous. And then finally, I'll say that we'll have to double the number of indigenous homegrown engineers if we're going to decarbonise transport, decarbonise industrial heat and double the size of the grid in order to provide for this all-electric future. If I could have the first slide, next slide please. This shows in yellow the total amount of energy used in the world since about 1880, all the way up to an extrapolation to 2050. The data only goes up to 2020 and the extrapolation is based on business as usual. The blue line underneath it is the total amount of fossil fuels. And at the moment, about 84% of all our energy is fossil fuels and that's going to drop, as you can see, to about 79%. There is simply no question of that blue line turning over unless we all choose to adopt a North Korean style of life, full stop. There is no way out of that. Next slide please. This shows the energy consumption of the world since 1960 through extrapolated to 2035. And I'll show you on the next slide, I'll come back to this one, in the next slide please, I'll show you why I'm very confident of that trend. This slide shows the rise of the global middle class. This is a graph of total world population from 2000 to 2040, I think. The point is that the brown bit there is the global poor and the green bit is the global middle class. Now, if somebody moves from a rural slum or an urban, urban slum or rural hovel into a high-rise building where they have electricity for the lift, for heating, lighting and communication. I'm going to make the assumption that they use somewhere between three and four times as much energy per person per day as the person in the slum. If that single factor is correct, if we go back to the last curve, I can explain that entire slope. Because personal consumption of energy in the West is slight and, is sorry stalled and slightly decreasing. But the global middle class, and I have to say that there are 500 times as many people in the global poor as there are in New Zealand. So that everything done by way of climate change mitigation is being undone 500 times over in the rest of the world by this process alone. Next slide please, or the final slide. These are the currents that are drawn by major appliances in a future electric home. A fast electric charger for a car, 33 amps, a slow charger, 12 amps. The radiation hob of an induction stove, 27 amps when it's glowing, electric shower, 40 amps, an air source heat pump when starting up. And I was talking to an MP earlier today who said his own house trips out, the mains trip when this happens, and then the kettle at eight. At the moment, we have a 60 amp fuse and I defy you to tell me how you could adjudicate between a teenage showering, a parent wanting a fast charge for an extra journey that day, another parent cooking on a cold winter's morning. That is a major piece of infrastructure that has to be done before we have even 10% of cars. And with that, I'll leave you to it. I just want to make a plea for engineering reality to underpin the rhetoric in this subject, thank you.
We probably have one time, time for just one question, councillor Panet.
Thank you so much, Michael, for coming in, I look forward to our catch-up over coffee. Can I just quickly ask whether you've received in your role as trustee of the Global Warming Policy Foundation, any funding from Big Energy or any of the people that you work with?
No, sorry, if I answer that question, the answer is no, I'm actually a donor.
Right. And also, do you accept that the environmental challenge is not about engineering but about reducing consumption in the first place because we consume too much on a finite planet?
I agree with that, but I want you to name the country that is the model for the stable consumption in the new era. I've named North Korea, would you like to name an alternative? Because I've, I'll leave it, I'll leave you there.
We'll leave that as an open question because we generally don't have questions backwards and forwards. But thank you very much, Professor Kelly, for coming in and sharing your knowledge with us, we appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, and reality, yep.
Kia ora. Now I'd like to welcome Jessie Richardson, noh mai ha'urangi Jessie. Jessie's going to talk to us about the possibility of a land value tax in Wellington. So Kia ora, and Jessie, you've got five minutes and as you can see, it goes really fast, but we might have some questions for you.
Kia ora, so I'm here today to talk to you guys to ask you to consider the possibility of a land tax here in Wellington. So I'll try and rush through this real quick, so I'm going to talk about what is land tax, why is it good and why hasn't it happened yet? So just, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the concept. So just, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the concept, but as, as I'm sure you all know, I don't need to tell you this, we have rates here in Wellington and we pay them on the value of land and the property or improvements upon it. But from a very, from an economic point of view, but also from a social equity point of view and a point of view of trying to fix the housing crisis, I come to you today as a student who's very concerned about rent costs and also, you know, my generation's inability to get on the property ladder, also to you as an economics major who's concerned about whether we're taxing in the most efficient way. So the land tax would basically be moving from a model which mostly taxes land and the value of improvements upon it to only taxing or predominantly taxing the value of the land rather than the buildings. The reason for this is that when we're looking at addressing New Zealand's housing crisis, we need to be thinking about creating the proper incentives for people to build, for people to improve housing and to generate affordable and quality housing. So why is the land tax good in this regard? Well, it creates a whole bunch of great incentives for people who, who own land and are interested in developing land to, to build land and improve it. So when you move from a model of taxing property to taxing land, it is now relatively more expensive, is now relatively more expensive to own just land and relatively less expensive to own land with a bunch of properties on it. So that could be an apartment building which could house 100 people, for example. So it incentivises people who own land and are currently under utilizing it to use that land more. Because currently, if you build, say, I don't know, a million dollars' worth of improvements on your land, the council is going to tax you a few thousand dollars more a year as a result. Whereas what I'm saying is that we should be taxing everyone who owns land a baseline amount on the value of that land. And when you improve it, we're not going to tax you more on that because improving it results in more quality housing and it results in lower housing costs across Wellington because we now have more housing. So it incentivises people to buy land and when they've got the land, it incentivises them to develop it. It incentivises landlords to maintain and improve their housing. Because currently, the current system is if your house goes kind of to crap that you own, someone, some poor student like me is still going to pay money to rent, to rent it, but your, your rates are going to go down because the value of your property goes down. It disincentivises people to hold land in a speculative way. Because as we've seen, I'm sure you've all seen the news about the insanely rising house prices in Wellington and we're all very concerned about it. But so currently, why would you, if you're holding a valuable plot of land that doesn't have much improvements on it, why would you spend the money developing that for something that's good for society when you could hold it and maybe make like 30% return on your money in a year, which is insane? So currently, what we want to do, under the land tax model, what we want to do is discourage that and actually encourage people to build stuff on it by not taxing those improvements. And also from a climate change point of view, it's often been referred to as an eco-tax because it incentivises dense housing, incentivises building as much housing as possible without urban sprawl, which is, I'm sure we all know, helps to decrease climate change emissions. And so now to, why hasn't it happened yet? Because if you haven't gone the just-so-far, it's quite broadly good in about a bajillion different ways and it's quite broadly accepted by a lot of economists all over the spectrum, from lefties to people who are just sort of interested in sensible policy. And even David Seymour has said that he thinks it's good, but he can't support it because he thinks his constituents won't like it. So the reason is that a lot of people think it's politically unpalatable. So it floats around on the internet among economists discussing it and people who care about affordable housing, but it never actually gets done. And I could point to you a whole bunch of examples of places like Pennsylvania in America where they got it done and they saw huge increases in use of underused land and they saw huge increases in the, in the amount of affordable housing. So what I'm here to do today to ask you is to try and find a way to jump these political barriers, to get past the people who often have the loudest voices in politics, which is the rich landowners who will often argue against a tax like this. But it is necessary that we argue against them so that we can actually have an affordable city. And so I'm asking you to consider this proposal.
Kia ora, Jessie. So first questions from councillor Rush.
Thanks, thanks, Jessie. Really interested in your proposal. Do we have the current statutory or regulatory power to do that? Would we need the government to give us some powers?
My understanding is that Nelson has a land tax and so I would, and so I believe that we can do the same.
Question from councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think that you made a really compelling case. When we've discussed this before, one of the objections that people have raised or concerns they've raised is that it would be regressive considering the relative costs of land in Wellington at the moment, although I have had some economists say that it would be either broadly progressive or neutral. Have you done any kind of looking at that and what the impact would be on, you know, compared with the current situation?
Well, yes. As a young person going before the council, I thought I should look at some studies first. So the data I've seen shows that broadly, if you're looking at not just people who own land but people who rent it, the, the land tax would tax higher percentages of rich people rather than poor people. And that isn't, you know, we don't have concrete findings on this, but that's the idea. And the other important thing to note is that unlike a property tax, a land tax is very hard for landlords to pass the costs on to renters because the supply of land is fixed as opposed to property which can build more. So this is better for renters, probably worse for landlords.
Kia ora, Jessie. We've done a lot of thorough research there and it's really interesting to hear a different perspective on how we can do things. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Coming to Kauriro with us. I'd like to welcome Tim Shanahan. Morning, Tim.
Morning, Goo.
Thank you very much for coming to speak to us. So Tim's going to speak to us about item 2.2 in Wellington tennis.
I don't know how you're supposed to follow the passion of the previous speakers. Mine's quite simple, really. There's a lease decision or a recommendation to, to this committee for the extension of the lease for Wellington tennis with regard to the site in Brooklyn Road. I know the recommendation is certainly to allow the lease to be extended and I would hope that that is the feeling of the committee here today. All I really want to add to that is that it is a well-used centre. It is a venue that is of significance, not only to the sport locally, but the sport nationally. You see that reflected in the fact that even last year, we hosted the Federation Cup Asia-Oceania Qualifiers, which brought eight international teams to the centre in February. We've also for the last couple of years hosted at the venue, the New Zealand Championships in December. So it's not just about local tennis, it's about regional, national and international tennis and therefore I hope it's a simple decision. It's also appropriate to identify that we are in partnership with council at the moment to complete upgrades to the facility under the Sportsville Funding Partnership. And we have to date upgraded the indoor lights, crowding LED in there and significantly increasing the lux levels, which helps with the television coverage. We've also done a changing room upgrade and starting tomorrow, we are replacing the roof on the main four indoor courts. So if you're not going to extend the lease, let us know today before we start spending 1.2 million dollars tomorrow. So look, continue to be grateful to council for the fact you are allowing us to use that site. It certainly provides great benefit to the, the tennis community and grateful to yourselves and the staff, the officers and the sport and rec unit for their ongoing support also. Thank you.
Kia ora, Tim. And we do have a partai from councillor Foon.
Kia ora, Tim, and thank you for Uyur Mahi. I want you to know that my husband is a recent convert back to tennis at your place because his wife is slightly preoccupied. I guess one of the questions I have just around, you're aware that we've got the innovating streets, we're going to trial a cycle away.
I am visiting the presentation at 12pm today.
Oh, good. Okay, fantastic.
So don't ask me for an opinion at this point.
No, no, no.
I need to see the detail first.
Yeah. So questions are, do you know how most of your members arrive at the court, you know, at your grounds? And also, do you have ways of encouraging and incentivising mode shift for them as part of, you know, your communications as an organisation?
Yeah, look, most of the people that turn up to the centre are coming via private car. That's certainly the vast majority and we have onsite parking, we have street parking at the present time and they are comfortable using that. So for us, I guess it's, it's a challenge when you start looking at alternatives, like any, any not-for-profit, your, your margin lines are so thin, you don't want to necessarily rock the boat too much, you want to make sure you actually continue to remain a sustainable operation. So in terms of anything that would encourage a mode shift, I guess we're at a, at a point in that discussion where we need to understand what the options are. I have to be honest, I don't fully appreciate what options might be available or could be available and what we could encourage. But I certainly, as part of the partnership we have with council, don't have an issue with encouraging our members via our communications with a mode shift as long as we have suitable information to convey to them.
Kia ora, thank you. I'll, I'll ask our team to support you with that.
Kia ora. Councillor O'Neill has a partai.
Kia ora, Tim. Awesome to see you again and really happy to be bringing this paper here to council, I'm sorry, to SPC. I was just wondering if you could break down some of the other community partnerships that run alongside the, the lease that we're granting here today, other collaborations with clubs and things like that.
Yeah, look, I think one of the things that struck me when we were talking back in 2018 about Sportsville funding being appropriate for the site was the, the fact that councillors recognise, Sportsville doesn't mean necessarily multi-sport. It can mean the fact that we've got a hub, which is the collective for a range of tennis clubs. So there's the, there's the primary, I guess, item to contemplate in terms of partnership. It is the, the central base for the sport of tennis and all clubs come and play there and, and members of clubs play there on a regular basis. We do still have a partnership with Karate Club that uses one of the, the buildings that we have available onsite. They've been there for a very long time. It is acknowledged by them that currently they're not an incorporated society and it's part of the lease recommendations and a, and a recommendation that they accept that they need to comply with to become an incorporated society. We have had in the past and are looking to, to re-establish an association with capital football with regard to footsball being played at the centre, given the lack of other indoor facilities that they can use across the city. And one of the discussions we have had previously, because we've increased the lux levels above 600 lux, we can, we can actually get to a minimum of about 850 lux. National table tennis tournaments require a minimum of 600 lux on the tables. We are now a venue that can actually offer that and I think from what I understand, it's been a while since a national table tennis tournament has occurred in Wellington. So we're actually a venue that can assist with that and we're happy to have those discussions ongoing with table tennis.
Thank you. And we've got a question from Mayor Foster.
Tim, thank you. Good to see you here and I'm excited by those ideas to expand to other, other sports as well. I just wanted, could you just tell us a little bit about the, what's going on with the seismic issues or the, the engineering issues with some of the buildings that you've got there? The stand.
Yeah. We're, we're in a, we're in a situation at the present time where we don't have a seismic issue as such. However, when you look at what the historical use of the land was, and we're talking landfill, then every time you have a tremor, there's bound to be some degree of subsidence as the land underneath moves. And if you're either an incredibly finicky tennis player that can notice small movements in the, the ground as you run across it, or you're somebody like me that's always looking for the defects in a facility, you, you can clearly find areas where the courts have moved. And we're in a position where, as with any tennis court, you're resurfacing it every 10 years or thereabouts. And part of the process every 10 years is simply not to give it a fresh coat of paint and, and new looked lines, it's actually to address some of the, the deviations in the surface to build it up again and make it flat.
Sorry, no, I was talking more about the buildings. So you've got, because you've got, you've got a reference here in the paper to the North Stand, subject engineering report finding. So it's, it's that kind of issue of what's going on with...
Okay, so the, the, specific to the North Stand, the North Stand is actually in a circumstance where the reason we don't have a building warrant of fitness on the North Stand at the moment is because of movement in the flooring on the ground level. Now, the floor on the ground level, because it was a public walkway to allow people to come into the stands, is all cobblestone. So when you've got a cobblestone surface where every cobblestone is independent of each other, obviously if you get movement in the ground, you're going to get the cobblestones going up and down. That is actually the only thing that is preventing us from using that facility at the present time. So I don't believe it's seismic. There is work we need to contemplate to do. But also you've got to look at it in terms of, to what extent do we use that North Stand for continued viewing? When it was built in the 80s, there was a, a number of tournaments where people were coming in as spectators. It made sense to allow people to, to have a place to watch tennis. You look at last year's New Zealand champs, they were played indoors. The Fed Cup was played outdoors, but we had enough capacity for spectators in the west and the east stands, so we didn't need to use the North Stand. The only people using the North Stand was Sky TV, who had about eight people up there for filming purposes. So it is more that it's surplus to requirements. Therefore, do we want to spend money on upgrading it so that it can be used again? Not really if there's no specific use for it. So therefore, we've got to come up with the, the best option moving forward, bearing in mind that if we remove it right now, we'd be creating a quite significant wind tunnel that isn't going to encourage people to be using the outdoor courts. So it actually serves a purpose, not its intended purpose, but a purpose, purpose right now.
No, thanks.
Kia ora, Tim. Thank you very much for coming to Kauriro with us and answering our questions.
Thank you all.
For the work that you do. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our first paper, which is item 2.1, which is the new licence for a new licensee under the Wellington Town Bill Act 2016, which is the Tenera Gardens Incorporated. And I invite councillor O'Neill to introduce the report.
It is my pleasure, pleasure to bring this paper to SPC today. I wanted to quickly go through a bit, a few parts of the report and I'm really happy to answer any questions at the end. This is about setting up a, a new group to be able to take care of Tenera Gardens. This is an operation that's been going on for around 30 years. And for, and I want to start by acknowledging everyone over the last 30 years that has worked within Mookai Kainga Trust for the, for your really hard work and diligence. And it's noted in the paper that the community gardens were first established in 1991 for low-income families and organisations to be able to grow their own organic vegetables and increase food security. I know that's something councillor Foon's particularly really keen on as well. And with the passing away of the, the caretaker from the community in 2019, Mookai Kainga Trust felt like they didn't have the proper capacity. And so they began the process of, of talking with our park rangers and our officers at Wellington City Council to set up a new group to ensure that the thing that they love can continue on without them. And so this new group is about supporting some long-time gardeners within the area to be able to continue caring for that site. And altogether, they, combined with gardener's experience, gardeners have been working on this project for about the last 15 years and so it will be in good, stable hands. And then the old group, Mookai Kainga Trust, has also agreed to gift all of their mowers, all of the sheds and resources to the new group and that's pretty awesome. And then lastly, just to plug, I note that councillors on Tuesday were asking a little bit about the way that we regulate new community garden groups coming to these spaces and to, to plug the Toitu Ti Maara Atane that we've released, two really awesome backyard planting guides. And by we, I mean Anita, Shona and Kirsten and all of the wonderful council officers. And Mayor Foster and I spoke about those at, in front of many other parks, volunteers last year at the Christmas party and those planting guides helped to inform where we plant, what we plant. And it's a really, really awesome piece of work that our team has been working on for a really long time to ensure that within the local Wellington context, there's opportunity to keep with the local biodiversity. So with that, I'm really happy to recommend this paper to committee and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Do you have a second, Dave?
Don't have a second. I have a second.
Councillor Fitzsimons?
I don't wish to speak.
Would anyone else like to speak to it? No? Oh, councillor Foon?
Yes, I, I was excited to see this coming through as it gives us the chance to, or maybe for some of our newer councillors to understand some of the existing food systems that we have going on in, in the capital. And I do want to acknowledge the 30 years of work, not, not quite before I was born, but that's, yeah, quite amazing to know that a community has been working to, to grow food together. And of course, this isn't a new thing. You know, this is urban farming or urban community gardening has been a long entrenched system as part of how we, how we work together in an urban environment. And I think we can particularly see that there's a new surge of enthusiasm. And I think we can particularly see that there's a new surge of enthusiasm and a deep desire from our communities to continue in this practice. So I really commend those in Tenera Park for the work that they've been doing. I actually did a fashion shoot once there in part of their last business. Sorry, I meant to bring the image in today, but it was of course a real joy to be there. And you know, who doesn't like gardening in your best frock anyway? But yeah, great to see this paper coming to table and very keen to support this community. And actually, one thing that's apparent within this community is that collaboration is critical and that the information and resources are shared amongst communities as we are a little bit like sewing, you know, just trying to re-understand how to do these things that were really once intrinsic to the way that we lived. So, thank you.
Kiora. I think that's it, so you probably don't really need to write a reply because there was nothing to reply. Okay, we will now vote. Yeah. I thought you were waving to talk. That's carried. So now I will hand over to councillor O'Neill again to introduce the reporting back on the public consultation of a new lease on Wellington Town Belt. This is Wellington Tennis Incorporated. So over to you councillor O'Neill.
Yep, once again, really happy to bring this report, reporting back on the public consultation for the lease in the town belt. And I just wanted to thank Tim Shanahan for coming in to talk to us again today. I note that last time we talked about this, last year, councillors had lots of questions. And also to thank our own parks and recreation team for being able to come back and talk to us about that and seeing that there's been a really solid, good, great consultation. And yeah, I'd just like to, you know, it's pretty awesome that we have facilities like these within Wellington and I'm really excited to see all the national table tennis competitions and the several championships that we're able to hold here as well. Thank you.
Kiora, we've got a tennis match going on here. About a tennis match, thank you. So I think Mia Foster is going to second this. Don't need to say anything. I think councillor Fitzsimons needs to speak. No. Is there any other councillors that want to speak? Are there any other councillors? No. Thank you very much. So we will now, that we have a mover and a second, we will put that to the vote. I've got a vote. That is carried. We will now move on to item 2.3, which is a submission on Climate Change Commission draft report. And I'd like to invite councillor Paul to introduce the report.
Tenatato, yeah, so this is our submission on the Climate Change Commission draft report. And I just really wanted to thank Alison and the sustainability team for all of their work on the submission. I think it's the first paper I've read here where I emailed the officers and just said, I was furiously applauding at the screen reading the entire submission because it just, I think, is on point with the direction that councillors have been asking our organisation to move in, in terms of our climate action and our thinking around the way that we do that. So, yeah, I just really want to thank officers, I think they absolutely nailed it. There really isn't anything more to add to this report, although there have been a few points that my colleague councillor Penner has added to emphasise, but I think those are well covered in the report regardless. And I just wanted to thank the sustainability team again for their constructive approach to the submission and offering abundant time for councillors to have their input into this, having a workshop explaining the various parts of it and our approach in general to climate action within the organisation. And yeah, I'm interested to hear your thoughts, but I think I've heard a lot of them already. But thanks to councillor Penner for seconding and happy to present this.
Over to you councillor Penner.
I'll reserve my right and just wanted to check that all those amendments that are supported by officers are on the table, just double check.
Yeah, we are handing them round, so you've got an email copy.
Yeah, fabulous, thank you. So councillor Penner is reserving her right, who would like to go on the speaking list? Oh, councillor Rush would like to speak.
Thanks, I mean, I'm just wondering if it's possible for a tea break because, to read this? Or, I mean, I guess...
I'm fine with that.
Just one, there is a lot there.
Yeah, and we're getting close to morning tea, let's do morning tea now. So we'll do 15 minutes, we'll come back, actually, we'll come back at 22. So just, we'll sort it out.
It's just something he needs to explain.
Through the chair, excuse me councillors, so under number two in your printout you see some, an extra paragraph, that's an error, sorry about that. That same paragraph has been incorporated in three E. Uh, no. So, number two should now read, so number two is now this, agree with the key points outlined above and in the cover letter. And then number three is approve the cover letter ETC with all the following amendments. And number one and four will be taken separately, two and three, so there was a request for separate votes.
Yeah, they are, so they are as they are. Two still stays the same, it just doesn't have that big paragraph under it, that was in the wrong place. So there's still one, two, three, four, and so councillor Rush would like numbers three and four, three, two and three to be taken separately. It's confusing to say one and four because that's obviously receiving information, so it's actually two and three that he wants separately. This is all officer. Yeah. All right, so councillor Rush, do you want to speak to it now or would you like to let someone else go while you're ready?
I'll speak, Madam Chair. So first of all, I'd like to thank officers for putting together a really good submission, I am supportive of broadly most. But nevertheless, there is a philosophical change between what the Climate Change Commission have put in their draft and what has been put in front of you as our submission to, on behalf of Wellington. And where I draw your attention to is page 25 of the draft, there's a box for technology behaviour change. And it's a live, it's a live debate amongst academia, but the feedback that I have had is that the best path forward that will have the best chance of getting support and success is to identify pathways that of, that use current technology and economically viable. And if better technology comes along the way, then you can bank those. And that's seen as being both realistic, practical and likely to gain the sort of momentum for change. The alternative, which is to go for a targeted approach whereby we use the target and don't limit ourselves to current technology in order that we may increase our ambition is, you know, can be viewed as being, setting us on a course without real direction. So I just want to share that with you, it's a, it's a live debate in academia. I think that the way the Climate Change Commission has got it at the moment is right. I'm aware that industry think that the forecast emissions transfer costs, sorry, the carbon price when it gets to $50 will achieve what we need, but we'll need a lot more planting, so I wouldn't support that either. But technology might come, so as a consequence, I'm supportive of most of the amendments, but because they require me also to support the submissions, and this quite philosophical point sort of runs through it. I can't support three, but I'm happy to receive the information and I'm happy for the, for it to be, I think, submitted as part of four. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I support the Climate Change Commission, and I would all point out that two of the scientists on there are part of the same academic institution that has given me my perspective.
Anyone else like to speak to this? Councillor Fohn.
Yeah, kia ora tato, just to start with acknowledging Alison Howard and her team for putting together a submission that I, and I know many other councillors will be really proud to hand into the government with our, with Wellington City's name on it. I am supportive of the strength of the submission, asking the government to be bold and to be more ambitious, not settling for what's achievable or none over what is possible. I'd also like to thank our councillors, Tamitha Paul and Terry O'Neill, for reminding me every day that these are one of the important steps that we need to take on our climate and ecological emergency journey on behalf of our city, and it is also the reason why I'm here. Thanks to all those who have gone in the past, who have put our strategies together, and it is a wonderful place to start, to see them all lining up. So acknowledging particularly councillor Iona Pennett and many of those councillors ahead who formed our city vision, which I understood from one of our officers, that it took two days to discuss whether green or eco was the right word for that vision, hence we have eco. Tiata Kura, planning for growth on our urban form, let's get welly moving, and the Wellington Regional Waste Plan. So it's wonderful to see all of these coming up and woven through our submission. I want to reiterate a couple of points in the letter, that number two, that the increase, we need to increase the speed and scale of transport recommendations, and that in a city like ours, we could do this in a relatively quick time with government support. And also number five, to recognise the significance of local government, as we hear so many of our submitters who come and sit at this table to tell us of the part that we can play in that. I also just see when I read the report that basically this is summarised into systems. Systems that we haven't discovered yet, i.e. innovation, we would never have thought we would all be carrying a mobile phone or not having to go to a shop to buy something, that's only in my grandparents' generation. In this, we talk about building on new, new systems through technology, seeing the opportunity in the electric car, seeing that car share can take 11.25 cars off the road, and we're seeing the massive ride in electric bikes, with only more momentum to go there. And having a look at existing systems in a better way, so acknowledging that flexible working hours, why do we all have to come to work at the same time, even school, even university, all of these things could be changed. And public transport as an existing system, but why can't we get it so good that you wouldn't use it like in London? And really looking at systems that are no longer serving us, acknowledging that our city can't take more private car ownership, that there is nowhere left to store these, even if they are electric. And acknowledging that the legislation for parking needs to be reviewed because it is a fact, it is cheaper to get a ticket than to pay your parking fees. And also to learn from nature's systems, and this is where the circular economy opportunities become, come in because nature doesn't waste anything. And we need to view waste, if it can't be repaired, reused, recycled or composted, then it needs to be designed out of the system. So I will say that I'm very proud to stand by this submission and the amendments, and yeah, I look forward to seeing government when they read it. Thank you.
Kia ora councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, just really briefly wanted to talk in support of this submission. I'm really, really proud of the paper that's come to us today and how accessible the language is that our officers have, have worked with in order to help all councillors to fully understand what we're recommending to the Climate Change Commission as they recommend to government. And in particular, I'm quite interested, having worked in the NGO space around climate, is to try and advocate towards government to set targets about what is required, not what is just achievable, and setting standards for the bare minimum or what we can do easily isn't going to get us there. I firmly believe that our, the Climate Change Commissions could be a lot stronger in talking to government about what, what targets are achievable and what targets are also strived for in the central government. I believe that we need to see strong ambitious action on climate change. And, and to close off as well, having in response to submitter and my colleague councillor Rush here as well, I, I acknowledge that technology is evolving and innovation is evolving, but we can't all try and rely on Elon Musk to get us there. And so I believe that mitigation is, is completely necessary to be at the forefront of climate change response, not just, not just looking at adaptation as well, and so I'm really keen to, to support this and I believe that we need to be doing all we can across the board. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Councillor Pennett, that's probably a good time for you.
Thank you councillor Day, and I apologise colleagues that I couldn't be here today, I've just got a bad cold. Look, I too want to give a huge thanks to officers for this really strong submission, a huge amount of work's been put into it, and also to ELT for actually signing this off too, because it is a really, really good submission. And I do think the focus on, on being more ambitious, on being more bold about escalating our work in the transport area, the dress transition, working with EWE, the economic costs of not taking action are really, really strong, so thank you so much for that. But I would just like to make a few points, because, you know, I've seen it, my job had to challenge at times. I regret in some ways that there has been such a strong focus on climate change. While it's obviously urgent, it somewhat misses the point of the environmental challenge, which is to talk at a very fundamental level about our relationship with nature, about the way we use resources, about our rights and the rights of future generations. And, you know, we saw some of this through Professor Michael Kelly's submission, that some of those fundamental issues still need to be resolved. And of course, there are many cultural perspectives that understand this too. And so we really do need to focus on how we're using resources, we need to look at population. Would say that I think a decreasing birth rate is an excellent thing. excellent thing. And we need to think about the way and envision the way that we're going to live in a really different way, but not like North Korea, which no one would aspire to. So there's a few things where I think we need to keep working on. The emission of agriculture, I accept that the council officers felt that they didn't have the relevant expertise, but I think it is something for us to look at, because whilst we might not be producing the goods, we are consuming them, and that's why I always do have a bit of a concern around the fact that we say we've got quite a low carbon footprint, and I don't think that actually would hold up to scrutiny if we looked at our consumption patterns. The focus on council is one I think that is needed, because as you all know, we are not going to meet our own 2030 targets at the moment. And so I think before we talk to other people about reaching theirs, we need to also do our own housework and work on getting that sorted. On waste, look councillor Foo, thank you so much again for your really true environmental leadership around getting communities to take responsibility for their waste, that is absolutely the right perspective. But I did ask for it to be modified a little bit because I do feel we just need to be a bit practical about how communities will function and whether people will all do that. One day I hope they will, but at some point we probably will need some centralised action. I also, I hope you're grateful, some of you did raise the, the point around rural areas. For us, for us it is much easier to lead a sustainable lifestyle, but it is much more difficult if you are in a rural area, so I appreciate the officers taking that on board. Also, the place of provinces, who will be able to do more in the rural areas and things like public transport. I think the point that the officers made, they raised the question about whether the Climate Commission has actually got us on a path to keep us through a 1.5 degree increase in global temperatures is a really important one, and we all have a lot more to do in this area. And I'd just like to finish by talking about the climate sceptics. I'm just going to be brief, because actually I don't think we should be talking a lot about them. The science on climate change is settled, and what we really now need to focus is on is how we're going to respond to that challenge. I was pleased to hear that Professor Kelly does not take funding from energy interests, because unfortunately, many of his colleagues in the climate sceptic world do, and that is something that needs to be really transparent so that we can see where people are coming from. I do not accept that a green vision for the world will lead us to being like North Korea. Technology does have a place, but also we must focus on that reduction of consumption. Electric cars are not going to be for everyone, walking, cycling and public transport, as we have always emphasised is a fantastic solution. And in a green world, we will have resources used properly and provide for everyone, rather than as is currently done, where a very small number of people have enormous resources and most do not. Engineers have their place in this debate, but engineering is not the ultimate solution for getting us out of the mess that we have got ourselves into. We need to look, as I said before, at our relationship with nature and the way that we live our lives in quite a fundamental way to ensure that everyone has enough. But look, thank you so much again to officers, I think this really moves us a long way on our climate journey and very proud to support it.
Kewada, councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to echo the comments particularly of councillor Panet and councillor Foo, and also acknowledge the thousands of young people who went on the climate strikes and the message that they sent us, and also the very effective campaigning during the last local body elections where people, sometimes children, asked candidates to commit to bringing a climate change lens to every decision that we make around this table. And I know that that has certainly impacted on the way that I look at the advice that we receive and the decisions that we make. And I just wanted to join with councillor Panet in dismissing the climate sceptics. Councillor Rush, just because there is an academic debate does not mean it's a valid debate. And I'm particularly pleased to see that we've got in our submission assessment of the social and economic impacts of climate change, because we do know that our most vulnerable and poorest people are most affected by transitions and as we move to both reduce emissions and mitigation. So we must make sure that we look after our most vulnerable as we tackle this very large problem.
Kewada, councillor Paul, you write a reply?
Oh, yeah, thanks so much. It's really good to hear all the visionary and inspiring statements around the table. I made mine known when this advice came out, but I just wanted to say that I echo a lot of the points made around the table, I think it's been a very constructive debate, so thank, thank you to all my colleagues for that. And thanks councillor Panet again for flying the climate flag for a long time now. You're a well-respected leader in the climate space and it's been an honour to learn from you. I guess all I'll say is it's easy to tell everyone else what they need to do, it's easy to ask the government to do things. It's easy, it's not easy to organise the school strikes for climate, but it's easy to walk on the street and, and wave a sign, but let's just remember the hard, the hard part for us is, is the hard decisions that we have to make around the spatial plan on future infrastructure spending and working with key people across the city. So, yep, it's all great to sing our song and be visionary on this issue when it's not asking us a hard decision, but, you know, keep that same energy when those tough decisions do come around the table. Cool. Thank you.
Kewada. All right, so we're going to take, well, we'll do one and four first. So just to be clear, we're doing one and four first. So those two together. These are two and three. Going to ask for a division on the next one, just because I know councillor Panet would like that. Okay, so that's carried unanimously, and we'll now vote on two and three. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to item 3.1, which is the report of the Finance Audit and Risk Subcommittee meeting on the 10th of March 2021. And I will hand over to councillor Calvert, who will introduce the report and help remind us of which report is which.
Thank you, I'm just getting my page because I was interested, listening to the debate, I didn't get my page up for the next paper.
Can't you multitask?
No, I can't, this is very important, you can't multitask on that. Okay. Look, sorry, I just, sorry, I'm just trying to find the page. Okay, thank you. So this is the, just reporting on the paper that came to Finance Audit and Risk Subcommittee last week on our six monthly review of health and safety in the workplace system. I'd just like to commend officers for the, the work that they've been doing in this space. It is one of continuous improvement, and also as our environment changes and as the issues before us change, and not least being in the middle of a pandemic, there certainly needs to be agility about ensuring that our workers are kept as safe as possible. So thank you officers for the work that you've been doing through this. As we said, there's no rulebook, a practical rulebook to deal with a pandemic of the nature that we've just had. So, and of course, it is, even though we've had, you know, we're going in and out of various lockdowns from time to time, we still need to adapt our systems to, to deal with that. The information is, is there. Officers have given us a lot of information through the Finance Audit and Risk. The key thing for us is to make sure that our, our health and safety system is working effectively, and, and in particular areas like employee participation, officers, and in the legislation, we are classed as officers, that we're carrying out our due diligence functions, and also that we are, and just also ensuring that in relation to work with contractors, it's not just us, say, for example, in this building, there are other organisations in the building, we have contractors coming in and out, and the same applies to being, you know, outside of these premises. And I think it was really good, the paper that councillor O'Neill introduced around Tenera Gardens, and, and one of the requirements was that, that organisation had a health and safety plan that would be approved by officers. So I think you, for me, it's actually seeing some of that stuff coming through more, that so, you know, gives me confidence in, about the system. And, and I think one, you know, and, and the way officers are managed, there's a lot of risks, but making sure that, that we're strategising, we're prioritising where those key risks are. And I know that some information is going to come in public excluded, once we've debated that, that as much information as possible will be made public, so that we have got that transparency around matters. So look, I just will move these, move the recommendation, I'm just wondering with Mayor Foster, you also on the committee, would you second that? So, yeah.
Would anyone else like to speak to this paper? I think you've done a thorough job introducing it there, and so you don't need to write a reply then really, do you? We'll go to a vote. Thank you. So now we will go into public excluded, so officers recommend that the public is excluded from the following part of the proceedings of the meeting, and it's laid out in the paper. I will move the motion that we go into public excluded. Is there any debate on that? Oh, I need to second it first. You get a second at councillor Rush? Oh, good. Is there any debate? No. Cool. So now that we've got it moved and seconded, we will vote accordingly. And that's carried, so we'll just make sure we have a moment so that we can get things right.